Okay, I'd like to call this public meeting to order. If everybody would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And this morning, we have Matthew Fidor here, who is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. He is currently serving as the District 11 Commander for Lackawanna County. Served 30 years from 1978 to 2008, and retired as a First Sergeant in the Pennsylvania Army National Guard in 2002. He served nine months in Germany during Operation Enduring Freedom, Task Force Keystone, and he currently lives in Dunmore, and we're honored to have him here this morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last Commissioners' meeting.
Motion.
On the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, and the minutes have been approved. Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Okay. Seeing that there's no one, we would like to congratulate our Director of the Office of Environmental Sustainability, Nicole Shapiro, on having a beautiful baby boy. All is well, all is healthy, which is great. And taking over for Nicole, in her absence, is Mark Ian Muncie, who is our Educational Specialist and Community Outreach Coordinator in the Office of Environmental Sustainability. She's doing a great job as well, and she wanted to come up and inform the public about a few grants that are coming up. Mark Ian?
Hello, good morning Commissioners. So, our office electronics recycling grant is officially open. We offer this grant every year. It's to help municipalities with their burden of recycling electronics like TVs. There's a law in Pennsylvania that requires these to be recycled properly and not landfillled or even illegally dumped. So this year, the process for applications is a little bit different, where we are offering it to all of the municipalities, but priority is going to be given to those who have never received the grant before. There's going to be a total of seven awards given out, and it's on a first-come, first-served basis, and the grant can be accessed on the county website, and I also sent it out to the municipalities yesterday morning.
That's great. Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update.
Thanks.
Okay, first up, there are two motions. The first one is a motion to award the Lackawanna County Montage Mountain Resurfacing Project to the lowest and most responsible bidder, Penzi Supply Incorporated, 300 Armstrong Road, Pittston, Pennsylvania, 1-8640, with a total bid of $3,574,998.40. Does anyone make the motion?
Motion.
There is a second. Okay, on the question, we have our County Engineer Frank Suma and our Director of Roads and Bridges Larry Lukasik to speak on this project. Gentlemen?
Thanks. As mentioned, this motion is to award the Montage Mountain Resurfacing Project. The project consists of the paving of Montage Mountain Road, Glen Mara National Boulevard, I should say, a portion of Glen Mara National Boulevard, Pre Drive, and Lakeview Commons. All in total, it's approximately six centerline miles. We have a map displayed showing the limits. And what you're looking at on the mapping is, this phase, we're calling Phase One in red. Phase Two will be next year's planned project to pave the remaining portion of Glen Mara National Boulevard, which will be from the intersection of Montage Mountain Road down to SR 502. We conducted a public bid, and five bids were received. We've reviewed all bids, and at this time, we recommend the award go to the lowest responsible bidder, Penzi Supply, with a bid total of $3,574,998.40.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments?
Just one comment, even though you guys can't see me behind the drive-in movie theater screen. Just, we're all hoping, and I know I talked about the work session, that the utilities are known for liking to dig up brand-new roads, so we are all hoping that their work has been done and they won't have to touch anything. So, let's hope that is the case.
Commissioner, we normally go out as far as a year in advance on any of these projects, and we send out letters to all utility companies. PPNL, right down to Comcast, the water company, the gas company, they're all notified well in advance, and they know that we're going to do these projects. We have onsite meetings with them, so everybody's aware a year in advance, and if there's anything they have planned, they should let us know. But we didn't get anything on this particular project, so we're going ahead with the paving.
Yeah, no, we need to do that. I just hope that, we never updated our pave-cut ordinances, I don't think. But if, can we hold them to the standards of, like, curb-to-curb repairs if they have to come in and dig up?
Our pave-cut ordinance, yeah, it will allow that, that if they come in and dig, I think within five years, if they do any major, we could make them pave curb-to-curb a good section of the road.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner McGlynn.
And Commissioner, under our ordinance, they are required to come into us first and get a permit. They don't always do so, but they're supposed to do so.
Thank you. Commissioner McGlynn?
Just really quick, you can talk about Phase Two a little bit, if that's okay?
Yes, so, actually, originally, with this same paving project, we intended to pave the remaining portion of Glen Mara National Boulevard. But during design, we realized there's, the existing pipe culvert under the roadway was in poor condition, and we thought it was more prudent to replace the pipe culvert first before the pave project. So right now, we are designing and permitting the replacement of that pipe, waiting for the DEP permit to come back. So as to not hold, the rest of the paved project, that will be next year's pave and pipe replacement project.
That's great, thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks Larry.
Just on the question, two comments. First of all, I want to thank these two gentlemen for the work that they've done with this project and many, many others. Larry Lukasik does a phenomenal job as our Director of Roads and Bridges, and Frank Suma does a wonderful job as our engineer. Investing in our infrastructure is investing in our future. And Montage Mountain Road, as many of you know, is a vital gateway to some of our top attractions here in Lackawanna County, including the shops at Montage, PNC Field, and the Pavilion at Montage Mountain. This three-and-a-half million-dollar paving project ensures safer, smoother travel for residents and visitors while supporting local businesses, tourism, and economic growth. Quality roads are the foundation of a strong local economy, and I am proud to support this important investment in our county's future. And again, I thank these gentlemen for their good work in putting this together. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion passes. Second motion is a motion to award the Lackawanna County Poplar Street Bridge Repair Project to the lowest and most responsible bidder. T. Brennan Heavy Equipment, 66 Crystal Lake Road, Fall Township, Pennsylvania, 1-8407, with a total bid of $190,283. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion and a second. On the question, again, here to speak on this is Frank Suma and Larry Lukasik. Gentlemen?
So, as mentioned, this motion is to award the Poplar Street Bridge Repair Project in Mayfield. The repairs primarily will consist of the replacement of the existing concrete sidewalk and bridge barrier. The bituminous overlay over the bridge will also be removed, and concrete deck repairs will be made prior to final resurfacing and restoration. The exhibit presented kind of shows the existing condition of each side of the bridge. As you can see, the sidewalks and barrier are deteriorating and getting worse every year. We conducted a public bid, and six bids were received for this project. We've reviewed all bid packages, and we recommend award to the lowest responsible bidder, T. Brennan Heavy Equipment, with a total bid of $190,283.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Again, thank you for this. This obviously is another critical piece of our county's infrastructure, and we're investing in the future. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion has been approved. Thank you very much.
Thanks guys.
Resolution 25-0046.
This is approving the current payables. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County's general fund numbers, 8381642-382054, inclusive totaling $2,403,802.92. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $6,299,211.60. Adopted and regularly being the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on February 5th, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0045.
This is entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Jessup. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Jessup for snow removal and de-icing of certain roadways. Adopted and regularly being the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on February 5th, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that, once again, is our Engineer Frank Suma and Director of Roads and Bridges, Mr. Larry Lukasik.
Good morning, everyone. Lackawanna County currently owns a portion of Valley View Drive and a Jessup industrial park. When it was built in originally, Jessup took over the portion that was from State Route 247 up to where McLean Trucking is. When, in probably 2010, somewhere around there, when the rest of it was done, the Commissioners of Lackawanna County decided to take over that road. So we own a portion of Valley View Drive, probably about, little under two miles. But to get there, we have to drive over a road that Jessup plows, then we plow ours, and then Jessup continues on the other side of us, and they go plow again. So there's two trucks plowing over the same road. So we came into agreement with Jessup that they would take over the whole industrial park, plowing only, not owner shop, not maintenance, just plowing, and we would take over the lower section down by our garage. Our trucks pull over our garage and go over Veterans Drive, Valley View Drive, or Mid Valley Drive, all the time, all day long. So it makes more sense for us to plow that section for Jessup, and Jessup go and plow our section, rather than have two burrows up there doing the same thing. So, we talked to Jessup Borough, we came up with this agreement, and we're hoping that the Commissioners will sign off on it, because it just makes more sense, instead of having trucks all over the place.
Absolutely. Any questions for Director Lukasik? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question, on the question, I want to thank you guys again for putting this together, and also, a big thanks to Councilman Greg Betty from Jessup, who was instrumental in pushing this forward as well. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you, gentlemen. And if we, can we just move that screen too, so he can see the, thank you. Thank you. Okay, resolution 25-0033.
This is entering into an agreement letter with the OIFIS audit. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby accept the proposal and enter into an engagement letter with Bradley T. Murray CPA LLC for the audit of the Office of Youth and Family Services for the year that ended December 31st, 2024. Adopted and regularly being the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on February 5th, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that, is our Director of Office of Youth and Family Services, Ms. Carrie Browning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Morning.
The Office of Youth and Family Services is requesting approval to enter into a contract with Bradley T. Murray to provide auditing services for the fiscal years 2024, 2025, and 2026. Annual audits of our office are a mandatory county and state requirement, and RFQ was posted for this service, and Bradley T. Murray was the sole respondent. The cost is $17,500 annually for the three-year term, and the audits are reimbursed at the 80% rate.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Director Browning? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0034.
This is approving the OIFIS Professional Service Agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services Professional Service Agreement for fiscal year '24 through '25 with the following, New Life Adolescence. Adopted and regularly being the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on February 5th, 2025. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that, is Director Browning.
So, the Office of Youth and Family Services is requesting approval to enter into a purchase of service agreement with New Life Adolescence to provide residential services for dependent female children ages 12 to 18 years old. The per diem rate is $416.06 per day. We only are charged if a child is placed there, and it's reimbursed at 60%.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Director Browning? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you very much. Resolution 25-0035.
Entering into a workers' compensation claims agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a third-party claims administrative service agreement with Claims Resolution Corporation to investigate workers' compensation claims to commence immediately and expire December 31st, 2027, at a cost of $44,000 for 2025. Adopted and regularly being the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on February 5th, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that, is our Director of Risk Management, Mr. Jack Judge.
Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners.
Morning.
The follow-up on what Brian just said, we put this self-insurance TPA contract out for bid. We received three bids, and Claims Resolution System Corporation recently bought out AmeriHealth Corporation, which has been the county's third-party administrator for an excess of 15 years. I met with them, and they indicated that there will be no changes to the people, key players in our program, and it's my recommendation that we go with Claims Resolution System.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Judge?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you guys.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0036.
Entering into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the City of Scranton to address community violence intervention and prevention. Adopted and regularly being the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on February 5th, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that, is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Kristin Magnata.
Thank you Chief, good morning Commissioners. If you'll so indulge me, this agreement is a collaborative effort with the City of Scranton to address community violence, including gang violence. The city and county will both provide 50% of contract costs to the consultant social contract not to exceed $52,631.42. This important initiative will use American Rescue Plan Act funds, along with partners such as the District Attorney's Office and Scranton School District and many others. The hopes of this initiative is to create a systematic approach to lowering, and with all hopes, ultimately eliminating, community and gang violence. A few examples of outcomes would be evidence-based community intervention programs, workforce training, and wraparound services to help children and their families. Currently at this time, we are in the information gathering and community partner engagement portion of the initiative. The initiative stems from current community violence issues which have left officers, children, and adults severely wounded or their lives taken due to community and gang violence. It is a priority and duty and responsibility of not only county commissioners, but law enforcement and us as citizens, to keep children and families safe from these incidents. So today, I ask for your approval on this agreement.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Magnata? Okay, thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question.
Just really quick on the question again, and I know we spoke about this a little while back, but again, this is just a really proactive program that it's really an effort to identify the cause, and the causes of violent crime, and you know, what we believe that it does, it really creates opportunities to help get young people on the right track and prevent violent crime.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question?
I know we did talk about this a while ago, and we compared, we actually talked about some of the programs that they did at York County, and our new state attorney general was, Dave Sunday, was the district attorney in York County, and they made huge strides in curbing violence and gang violence, and involved the entire community, and they have a great program. So, you know, looking into doing something similar to what they did, I think is only beneficial to not only the city, but to the entire county. So, it's good stuff.
Thank you. Just a few comments on this. So in Lackawanna County, as we all know, we pride ourselves on our strong neighborhoods, our vibrant schools, and our close-knit communities. But when violence strikes, whether it's on our streets, in our schools, or even within our homes, it shakes that very foundation of what we hold dear. And as public servants, we all have a duty to do whatever we can to protect the safety and the well-being of every resident in every neighborhood throughout Lackawanna County. But we can't do it alone. This is why collaboration between all of the stakeholders is not just important, but it's essential. When we work together, when we pool our resources, expertise, and resolve to tackle violent crime from every angle, it works. With this new endeavor, we are bringing our police forces, our community programs and providers, and our frontline strategies to the table. And together, we are forming a united front against the forces that threaten the peace of our community. I agree with Commissioner Chirmack and Commissioner McGloin, this similar type of program was done in York County, and it was brought to our attention by former U.S. Attorney Jerry Karam, and it was really, really successful in York County. They saw significant drops in violent crime and gun-related crime. So we're hoping that this has the same effect. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0037.
Entering into an engagement letter, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby approve and enter into engagement letter from Baker Tilly for the 2024 Affordable Care Act reporting. Adopted and regularly being the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on February 5th, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that, is our Director of Human Resources, Ms. Joanne Decker.
Good morning.
Good morning. We are seeking approval to enter an agreement with Baker Tilly. They will electronically file our 1095Cs, which is in accordance with the Affordable Care Act. It's a one-time fee of $1,500.
Any questions for Director Decker? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor, I'm sorry, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0038.
Entering into a service agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, is hereby enter into a one-year service agreement with Paper Handling Equipment Plus Incorporated for the pension office at a cost of $335. Adopted and regularly being the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on February 5th, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Decker.
Thank you. This is just to renew our annual maintenance agreement for our check folder. It's just for services and repairs as needed.
Okay, any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0042.
This is entering into a mural agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a mural authorization and license agreement with Scranton tomorrow, the Lackawanna County Convention and Visitors Bureau, Arthur Russo, ATR Properties and Artist, Penn Scott Miller, for the mural titled Remembrance and Continuance: The Lenape Story in Scranton. Adopted and regularly being the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on February 5th, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that, is our Director of Arts and Culture, Ms. Maureen McWigan.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
So I just want to give a brief, I promise it'll be a brief, background on this project. There's three agreements we're signing today. So Lackawanna actually is a Lenape word that means "stream that forks," and I only mention that because it's a part of our history that unfortunately hasn't been told enough, and we discovered this in a project we did with the University of Scranton, that people really wanted to know about our indigenous history, but there's still not a lot of information. As proud as I am of my coal mining heritage, that's a story that's been told. So, this project came about, we made a connection with a Lenape artist, and we thought, what a great way to have a gateway to educating the public more about this and beautifying our city, with the hope of doing future programming. So, we're partnering with Scranton tomorrow, so we're signing all of the contracts together because it's a joint contract, so this is to sign with the artist, or was this the funding agreement one? So we're partnering with the Visitors Bureau as well, so they are investing in, which is nice. We have a multiple amount of partners on this project.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Director McWigan? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question, on the question, thank you, Director McWigan, for all your work on this. I'm proud to support the approval of this project, which, as Director McWigan explained, honors the Lenape Native American tribe. Public art like this not only beautifies our communities, but also preserves and celebrates our rich cultural heritage, and by recognizing the Lenape tribe, we're acknowledging our past and inspiring a future that values diversity, history, and artistic expression across all of Lackawanna County. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you very much.
Thanks Maureen.
Okay, resolution 25-0039.
These are appointments to the Land Bank Board of Directors. Be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individuals to Lackawanna County Land Bank Board of Directors. Sherry Frabel, the Economic and Community Development Director for the City of Scranton. The appointment is by the City of Scranton's mayor. Du Phelan, the unexpired term of Selena Endappen. Term to commence immediately and expire on December 31st, 2025. Mayor Michelle Bannon of Carbonell, term to commence immediately and expire on December 31st, 2028. Commissioner Matt McGloin of Scranton, term to commence immediately and expire December 31st, 2029. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following individual, Ms. Kristin Magnata, Lackawanna County's Director of Economic Development, term to commence immediately and expire December 31st, 2029. Adopted and regularly being the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, held on February 5th, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Excuse me, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question.
Yeah, on the question, so, I know we had some of these last meetings, some appointments of some boards and authorities, you know, these decisions are made by the Board of Commissioners. So since these decisions are being made without any input from myself, you know, it's hard for me to just keep approving and approving and approving different people. On this particular one, I'm being removed from the Land Bank Board, which I've served on there for now five years. Thought I did a pretty good job. And last year, I was taken off the Conservation District Board, which I still attend every meeting. I like that group, and they're great people. Same thing with the Land Bank. So I have no issue if, you know, I'm going to be taken off of the Land Bank Board, but, you know, I think if I'm going to be removed from something, you know, maybe it's my turn to go, maybe go back on the Conservation District. I know with Matt's schedule, he's busy, he's not able to attend many of the meetings for the Conservation District, and I can't vote, so it doesn't do them much good, however I am there. So, you know, with that said, you know, nothing against any folks on these next few, some of them I don't even know, but I'm going to abstain from these votes until, you know, maybe the next ones I'll be included on some of these decisions or discussions, and I'll be happy to vote on them. So, that's what I have to say.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Mayor Al Chelick, excuse me. Mayor Al Chelick was on the Land Bank for quite some time, had a conversation with him. He's done a wonderful job. We decided to put the Mayor of Cartmanville on at this point, Michelle Bannon, who expressed interest, but just wanted to thank Al Chelick for all the work that he's done.
Al did an excellent job, definitely, and Michelle will do a great job.
Anyone else on the question?
Yeah, I'm just excited to be a part of the Land Bank Board of Directors, and really looking forward to doing my part in helping be a part of fostering economic and community development by eliminating blight and restoring vacant and abandoned properties back to productive use. So, thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Resolution 25-0043.
This is an appointment to the Lackawanna County Performing Arts Authority, be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individual to Lackawanna County Performing Arts Authority, Mr. David Meehall of Clark Screen. His term is to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2029. Adopted a regular meeting of Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February 5, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question?
Just on the question, you know, again, just to also, you know, we can also discuss some of these things at the work session, which, again, these were not part of that as well, so I will abstain from this vote.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question?
So, yeah, just on the Performing Arts Authority, you know, I just want to mention Dave Meehall. You know, Dave's almost a 20-year veteran of the Time Shamrock Communications and currently serving as the Director of Sales for Time Shamrock Radio and Outdoor. His experience of helping plan, promote, and sell concerts and events is something we bring, will bring great value to this authority.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0044.
These are appointments to the Lackawanna County Stadium Authority, be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby reappoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Stadium Authority, Mr. Michael Bartoletti of Old Forge. His term is to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2029. Be it further resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Stadium Authority, Mr. Gary Smedley of Carbonell. His term is to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2029. Adopted a regular meeting of Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on February 5, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you. Opportunity for the public to address the board?
Bob Ballis, Scranton. Just thought I'd bring your attention to the Commissioners. My trucks are still delivering product to the victims in North Carolina, Florida, Tennessee, and now some of them are heading to California. And I'm doing that with donations that we're doing, considering the devastation I've suffered under my own property, being totally destroyed by a fire a couple weeks ago. And I just sit here, and I go back when Gahan made statements about my contributions to people. You give of yourself. So maybe one day, you'll learn what that's all about. And my concern is the people in this country and what they go through, especially the victims of the flight in DC and Philadelphia. As a pilot, I've flown in there many, many times. This was an unnecessary accident that happened, and the fault should be on the pilots or the controllers. Should have paid attention where the planes were. A lot of people lost their life for no reason. The true property that was in the fire, as I've been advised, is off the tax rolls. So when you want to go to the Tax Claim Bureau to go after my taxes, keep in mind that we're going to be filing litigation on the 18 and a half-plus million dollars the county owes me right now. When I sit here and I look at things that went on, I see Powell is now being appointed a judge. And it's disturbing. I've had issues with him, where he keeps claiming he believes in the rule of law. The only rule of law, he believes, is selective enforcement. The true police department have been trying to get people that stole from us documented, and he won't approve it. This Grant PD, he approved of a detective here to arrest me on my own property with trespassing signs by a neighbor next door while the land is still in dispute on a piece of property I own that's deeded and an easement I've been using for over 35 years. This is not the type of people I want to see sitting on the bench and being appointed. I believe the process should be, we have sufficient judges here in Lackawanna County. It could have waited to the end of the year and let them run, just like everybody else does, and let the people decide who we want and who we don't want. So it was disappointing to see this, and I have to still deal with what he was doing because it was selective, because I was a Trumpster, because I was supporting Trump all the way down. And thank God, Trump is now our president, and America's got a chance now to come back where it belongs. We're not taking any gaffe from anybody else. We have a leader. And that's the most important word you could put out there, is we have a leader. And we're not having any games played. The Biden signs will be coming down. We're in the process of filing litigation. We have over 25,000 signed petitions to remove the signs, plus we have legislators now that are involved with us. So they will be gone, Mr. Gahan, and I hope you're out there today, you and the mayor are around when we take your signs down. The other part of it is that I've been coming here for a long time. This is my county. This is my city. And when a woman last week, Sandy, went to speak on the Kids for Cash that Biden had allowed Conahan out after he was living in luxury anyway, her son took his life. And she came here to speak about it to the city council. And she was ignored because she was from Luzerne County, but she's involved with me over here at Ballis Environmental Group on 400 Spruce Street. It was a slap in the face on legislators that we put at seats that think they're gods and they can control people. It was wrong, and I brought it up again last night. What we got to do is see the people that sit here understand it's about us, the people. It's not about you guys sitting up there, any councilman, or any judge, or anybody else. I've gone through the system with dirty lawyers, dirty cops, and dirty judges. And anytime anybody wants me to come out publicly and ask me about them, I'll be more than glad to tell you who the hell they were. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
Joan Hodawonitz, Scranton. What's the status of the 2023 audit?
February 17th is the date that we've been given, when it should, excuse me, when it should be complete.
And you're planning a session for the public afterwards?
Yes.
Okay, and be watching for that. How about the digital budget book?
So that should be completed, hopefully relatively soon, because it's a new initiative. You know, we ran into some quirks here and there, so we're just trying to iron them out.
And the Montage Mountain Resurfacing Project, have you a timeframe in mind for Phase One? Because I assume you're going to advise residents and businesses in that area because there'll be some level of disruption. Do you have a timeframe for Phase One?
I believe it's, go ahead, Director.
We're going to start in the spring, and it should be completed by the end of the year.
And you have a plan, though, to advise the people up there?
The engineering, yes, ma'am.
And there'll be alternate routes and so on and so forth?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Sure.
Allison, you're in Old Forge. Just a couple questions on what you approved today. So on Fort Oifus, so the Professional Service Agreement, which is 25-0034. She mentioned that it was only a 60% reimbursement at $416 a day. Why is it only 60% and not 80%, which is usually what the state reimburses at?
It depends on the type of service. Some, they reimburse 80%, others, they reimburse 60%. I could get a more definitive answer for you, but it really, it depends on the specific type of service.
Okay. Was that budgeted for?
Yes.
And it would be budgeted under consulting services, I'm assuming?
I believe so, yeah. I could double-check on that, but professional services or?
Professional services?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
In the new budget for this year?
Correct.
Okay. I'll look into it. No, I'll look into it. Thank you. Same with some of these other things. So the Workman's Compensation Claims Agreement, that's a two-year agreement. Was that budgeted?
Yes.
Okay. Same thing. Now, this new initiative for the gangs, I'm assuming that wasn't budgeted? Or?
No, it wasn't budgeted, but we're taking it from American Rescue Plan funds.
Right, I've heard that before. It seems like these ARPA funds never seem to go away. Do we have an accounting of all the ARPA funds that you have received and how much has been spent to date?
Yes, we're required by the federal government to track.
Oh, I know you are.
Every single penny has to be tracked and reported on, and there's a vetting process, so, yes, we have to report all those figures to the federal government.
Right, so can we see that information?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, how can I get that?
You could email or do a right-to-no request and just specify exactly what you're looking for, and we'd be happy to give that to you.
All right, great.
And I believe, we could check into this, but I believe that is on a website someplace where it has to be reported. We can ask Director Magnado after the meeting, but those reports are public.
Great, thank you. Also, the engagement letter to the ACA filing. I know it's only $1,500, but why can't we do it ourselves?
Chief, could you repeat that question again? I'm sorry.
The ACA filing that you have Baker Tilly doing, it was 25-0037. I understand it's only $1,500, but is there a reason why?
Yeah, we have to have an outside agency audit it and do that work. I believe that's the requirement. We can double-check that, but.
I would double-check that. That's not what I understand, and I'm in that business. I might want to check on that. Because it just seems like $1,500. I know it's not a lot of money, but it's still our money. That's going to do a, you know, a file. That's all they're doing. They're taking your data, and they're sending it over a file. So just thought, you know, I just would like to bring that up. And is it budgeted?
It is budgeted. Everything on the agenda is budgeted.
Now, if we were to do it ourselves, we would save that money, right?
There's a reason, I can't think of it off the top of my head, but when Director Decker came into the work session, she, yeah, she explained the reason why we have to farm it out. It's escaping me right now, but we'll get you the answer.
I think it's as simple as having a professional company do it makes the process significantly easier and, correct me if I'm wrong, but significantly easier to file electronically, right? Okay.
Right.
I'm sorry, what was that? They're not auditing it. They're doing the ACA filing. All they're doing is a filing. $1,500 to literally take your file and send it over to the government, so, yeah, $1,500. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Good morning, Commissioners. I wasn't going to speak, but I would just like to commend the Road and Bridge, Virgil Argenta.
Thank you.
I would just like to commend the Road and Bridge Department and Mr. Suma, the way they, I've listened to the way they work and conduct themselves. I think that's awesome that they're taking care of the infrastructure, and maybe they should give lessons to, like, some cities on how it's done when they work together maintaining a bridge up in Mayfield, sidewalks, and toppings for a little bit over $100,000. I just want to tell you, congratulations, and that's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board? No? Okay. Commissioners, other business? Commissioner Chirmac?
Couple things. Plane crashes. You know, as a pilot myself, you just wonder, I don't know if we'll ever know what happened in DC, whether it was the controller's fault or if it was the helicopter pilot, but whatever, it was a tragic loss. And we hope that, you know, maybe if they find out some safety things were missed, they can assure us that that can't happen again or won't happen again. But that was a huge tragic loss. Our hearts go out to all those families and our military people. It was devastating. And then we had the Philadelphia plane crash. I mean, that was, that was another one. It's tragic. It was a medical flight, and still don't know what happened there. So that was, that stuff is just terrible when you hear about it. I can't believe we're into February already. You know, I've been thinking about some of the things that are going to, that are going to start happening right now. The tax bills are going to be going out. You know, and all our residents and landlords and businesses, and everyone's going to get their new bills, which includes the new 33% tax increase. So, you know, I have some concerns that we should really be talking about, and I'd love to be involved in discussing some of the safety measures, you know, that we think are going to be necessary. You know, there's going to be a lot of rents going up to people that can't afford it. There's going to be a lot of increases to their property taxes that they can't afford. You know, our most vulnerable, the elderly, people on fixed incomes. You know, I believe there's a lot of things that we can do here at the county. There's tax relief programs. There's tax deferral programs. There's income-based tax adjustments that can be done for people on, you know, severely limited budgets. I'm sure that there's some emergency funds and grants that we can come up with for folks that are, you know, potentially going to lose their homes. We have some tools that we can use. We have the Homestead Exclusion, you know, for people that don't utilize it. That can help save some tax money there. Another initiative for mostly farmland and things like that is the Clean and Green Programs. So that's, could be huge in savings for some of these farms and people that can apply for the Clean and Green Program. So there's going to be some challenges out there this year. We have the reassessment coming for next year. Again, that's, it's going to be tough for some people. So I really think that we need to quickly take a deep dive and look into some safety nets for some folks. So those are things that's on my, that are on my minds, my mind. You know, I'm here to do everything possible I can for everyone that lives in Lackawanna County. I don't, it doesn't matter to me if you're Republican, Democrat, independent, it doesn't matter to me. I'm here for everyone. If there's a concern, please reach out. If there's some assistance that we can come up with, I'd certainly be happy to look into it. But just things that we really need to start looking at, it's tough. It's just tough out there. So, you know, hopefully, we can come up with some thoughts and some ideas. So that's what I have for today.
Thank you. Commissioner McGoyne? Thank you. I just have a few things. First of all, I want to thank Felicia from our IT department for putting together the presentation today and always doing a good job for us here at the county and the screens and everything. So thank you. We had, Commissioner McGoyne and I had a wonderful meeting with Larry Molsky from the Northeast Regional Railroad Authority about the train from Scranton to New York City. It is a transformational project, and they are so close to the finish line. So we have to do everything we can here in Lackawanna County. Every elected official has to make sure that we get this over the finish line. It will transform not only the city of Scranton, but Lackawanna County and this entire region. We also had a meeting with our new Superintendent of Steamtown, Jeremy Comas, and we discussed ways that we can work together between Steamtown, the Trolley Museum, and the Coal Mine Tour. So we're really excited about that partnership. I also participated in a symposium on aging, which was specific to dementia, at the Wright Center, and it was extremely informative. I was glad to be a part of it, and was really impressed with all the different providers and agencies who are dedicated to helping our elderly community, and especially those in our Aging Department. As I mentioned before to Ms. Hodawonitz, the audit should be complete by February 17th, and then we will have a public meeting with the auditor, and he'll go over, go over the audit. The PFM report on the financial challenges that we have had and the operational challenges that we had has been received in draft form by the Commissioners, so we were just waiting on their executive summary, and that's been complete. We are currently reviewing that in, if we have to make any changes to it or correct anything in it. And then we will have a public meeting before the end of the month. With PFM, they'll go over all of the findings. That will be a public document, and really, that sets the stage now for the next five years for county government and becoming more efficient and really getting ourselves on sound financial footing. And the last thing I just want to address is Commissioner Chirmac abstaining from the board appointments today, which is fine. That's his right as a Commissioner. But I do want to correct the record. We have asked We have asked Commissioner Chermak on more than one occasion, going back to last year, if he has people he would like to put on boards, authorities, and commissions, all he has to do is let us know, provide us with a list of those he thinks are qualified to be on the boards, and we will absolutely consider them. We requested from the public resumes, letters of interest, and to fill out the application that's on our website. If you were interested, and we provide it to public with all the openings on the boards, authorities, and commissions. We received all those applications. Commissioner Chermak has access to all that information. It's filed online through a shared drive in the Commissioner's office. So if he is interested in putting somebody on a board or has an issue with something, all he has to do is let us know. And that hasn't happened yet. So when that happens, we'll be happy to consider it.
As soon as you let me know, I'll let you know.
Tracy, how, so how long do we have the agendas in our hands for prior to this meeting? Just so you can answer that. Monday, right? So three days roughly. So he's had the chance to see it for three days. Okay.
So I mean, I'm really being honest. All you have to do is let us know. Look through the applications, look through the resumes and letters of interest, pick out the people who you think would be qualified, and we would be more than happy to consider them because we truly do want the best people to serve on these boards, authorities, and commissions. But I'm not a mind reader. I don't have VSP. Just let us know who you want on there, and we will definitely, absolutely consider it. So there's no need to abstain. Just be involved in the process, and we'd be happy to consider it.
With all due respect, excuse me, Commissioners. With all due respect, it's my understanding that those appointments were not listed on the agenda for the work session, nor were they discussed. So there would have been no way for Commissioner Chermak or anyone else attending the work session to know they were going to show up on the meeting agenda.
So the agenda is published prior to the meeting, well before the meeting, and everybody's got an opportunity to see the agenda, number one. And number two, as I've said before, we all have access to the same information. All you have to do is look through it and give us a list of who you'd like to appoint to the boards, commissions, and authorities, and make those recommendations, and we will consider them.
How about just including me in the discussions?
Just make a recommendation, and we'll consider it.
How about including me in the discussions?
And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.